All right, good evening. The time being 7:02 on January 7th, 2019. All members of the planning board being present, follows meeting order. That starting with agenda item A, approval of minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve the minutes from December 17th, 2018. Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Very good, okay, perfect, thank you. Moving on to agenda item B, B1, committee reports. Anybody want to make any committee reports they want to make at this time?
There will be an elementary school board community hearing tomorrow night, I mean Thursday evening here, to discuss the ultimate design. And a vote was taken two weeks ago.
All right, very good. Anyone else?
I'll say.
All right, okay.
Mr. Chairman, when is the, I wonder, the open house at the new hospital?
I don't know.
Circle home.
Yeah, do we have a date?
I think it was first week of February.
Okay. Mr. Fowler, I was down there, as a matter of fact, with my colleague, Mr. Delaney. Did a little tour all over the place. And they were looking at a February 10th, or 15th, or 17th date somewhere around there.
Or the 16th, so that's four numbers.
Yeah, so I mean, but they weren't sure. But they were planning on doing an invitation for us to go down as a board and some of the elected officials to go down. And from what I've seen, it looks great, so.
All right, well, we'll keep an eye out for the date then. All right, otherwise, we're all set with committee reports. Moving on to agenda item B2, 11 Old Boston Road, Art Stone Ave., nonsubstantial change request.
Hi, I'm Tony from Image 4.
Wait till you get up to the microphone.
Sorry. Hi, I'm Tony from Image 4.
Floor is yours.
So I'm back here after last month's review. We were to submit a rendering and an engineering letter. And you were to find out if this was indeed the right path that we were taking to get approval through this department, or if it was the building.
Okay.
I'm just here to follow up.
So, yeah, so this would be through the planning board. I did check with the building contractor.
Okay. Did we get any comments from engineering on artwork?
In terms of the structural analysis. So Kevin said that he's not qualified to do a structural analysis for that, so.
All right, so that's Mr. Fowler. Your part was to submit what we have here, which is this rendering.
And the engineering letter, the letter from the engineer.
All right, so that's Mr. Ryder.
I do see the letter from the engineer. I was hoping it to have a little more information into it, but, you know, they're stating that it does meet all acceptable requirements for this application, so it is, he is a P E, so we'll go with that. The liability will fall upon the engineer if there's an issue.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Fowler.
I'm all set with this.
All right, Mr. Delaney?
I'm all set with this.
Mr. Fattaya.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did get a rendering from you as far as the picture. I was hoping to get a better clearer picture. I mean, looking at this picture, it looks like it's a black stone, but they're actually all white, correct?
The stones themselves? I think it, they're, they, I can get you a picture of what one might look like when we first get it, and then after a period of time, it weathers, so the appearance will change a little bit.
It's not a black stone, right?
No, no.
We're just looking at that picture, you know, briefly, it looks like the front's black and the sides, but probably the prints everywhere, so.
Yeah, that's, that's the problem with computers, is everybody's computer screen prints out something different, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Other than that, I'm all set.
I think the answer to that is the part that is dark is the shadow.
Yeah.
All right, well, I have.
But correct, it is not a black stone.
We went round and round on this last time. At least, you know, looking at the picture as to where the artwork stands in relation to the likelihood of somebody reaching it, you know, helps. It does seem to be a bit of an effort it would take to get to them. So from that standpoint, you know, I feel better about it. You know, the engineering letter helps in terms of, you know, if they feel comfortable that, you know, it can withstand what it needs to withstand, you know, I'm not going to say, you know, we're not putting this on public space, this is going on your space, so it'll be on you guys if, you know, if these have any issues, so.
Correct.
I'll say, you know, I'll put it out to the other members of the board, that if we're going to approve this, that we make sure that it's staying in a good condition and maintained, so that if it turns out that, you know, as Mr. Ryder pointed out, something that doesn't belong in the Northeast is being put in the Northeast and can't stand up to, you know, our winter, that, you know, these don't just look like something from, you know, the Stone Age that had been left over somewhere, so. But other than that, I'm all set. All right, what's the pleasure of the board for this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
The nonsubstantial change? No, no, this is just a nonsubstantial, so make a motion to approve.
This nonsubstantial change.
Second.
All right, so with the motion made second, including the comment on the must be kept in a, must be upkept, kept in a, I mean, it's artwork, so I don't know, but a good condition, not allowed to deteriorate.
Absolutely.
Is that fine? All right, so the motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to agenda item B3, 1574 Main Street, nonsubstantial change request.
Thank you. Thank you.
So 1574 Main Street, so where we stand right now is that the majority of the building work is done, the site is essentially complete. We have to do still some hydro seeding and things of that nature, but for the most part, the site is, is built. They have a tentative date of February 15th that they'd like to open. You probably recall that we have a huge utility pole in the exit lane, the Main Street entrance exit. We've been working with National Grid and some of the other service providers for about six months. We have some of the service providers off the pole, we have the new pole in. But as it stands right now, it's out of our hands. We really are at their mercy right now. We think there's an outside chance that everything could be wrapped up by the time we actually try to open, which is the middle of February, but we don't know that. So to kind of have a conservative approach here, we've requested consideration for a temporary, non-significant change to allow us to open the facility with the entrance limited to the side road, Victor Drive, thank you, and keep the Main Street entrance closed as long as we need to, to allow National Grid and the service providers to move their lines off the pole. We submitted this maybe two, three weeks ago, give or take. Provided a couple of pictures, so you can see the new pole, you can see the Jersey barriers as well as the existing pole. We got some feedback from DPW, which essentially was that the work here is within Mass DOT's right-of-way, and additional barriers may be warranted. So we went out there last week, and that's what these pictures are here. We've put an additional Jersey barrier at the pole, and we're still able to maintain pedestrian access behind it to connect the sidewalks. With that, we're looking for the ability to make, to keep the open date regardless of the utility providers at this point. We think this is the way to go about it.
Mr. Delaney?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We know the pole is marked to come out, and as long as it's protected with the Jersey barriers, there's too many people in town who are waiting for this place to open. So I prefer to go with the opening date. And when the pole gets moved, the pole gets moved. You know, the only thing is, you know, you've got to make sure you fix the driveway.
Yes, right. Which we know we've got to do.
If all comes out, and it is marked by National Grid to come out, and the new pole is already there, you know, I've seen it, so I, I would say, yeah, go ahead with it. Get your road ready, there's too many people want to use it already that I know of, and I would prefer that you just go ahead. You're likely probably to take forever doing certain things, but this is, the building itself and what it's going to contain is more important to the town of Tuxbury than worrying about a pole in the middle of his driveway right now.
I'm all set with this.
Mr. Fattaya?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had no problem with it as well, before came the temporary occupancy permit. Providing that's the only mission that's, that's to be done. And also, and then I did tour the facility, went to Delaney, Mr. Crapp, and Mr. Kelly, and it's a nice, nice facility. We've met with Joel Kahn down there. I did recommend to him, he notified us of the issue as far as the pole, and I sent him to reach out to Mr. Feingold, Mr. Robinson, have them put some pressure on those companies to try to get the, get the situation resolved for the benefit of the tool group. I mean, I think it's a great facility, I can't wait for it to open, I think people are looking to use it as soon as possible, and I have no problem with the temporary occupancy permit, so, thank you.
Mr. Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I almost feel like we're the President and the Congress fighting over a wall. Because we said, well, gee, we have an area over there, and you don't take out the pole, if, if you don't take out the pole, we're not going to let you open. I mean, that's, in a sense, what some of them would rather us do, and I don't believe that. My question to you is, would it be logical or safe to allow the driveway from the south going in to open? And then just move the barrier that's there onto the other side, so they don't come down that side to go up over the sign?
I, I think it's reasonable. The only thing I would say is that it could introduce some confusion, where people pull in, and there could be some confusion trying to come back the other way, and then they're coming onto the entrance side to exit. You know, if it's something that you feel really strongly about, we could, you know, work with maybe Anna, come up with a plan that works, but.
Some of that can happen when it's open. Some of that.
Sure, yeah, absolutely, right, right.
Well, again, I think, not to repeat myself, but I think marvelous job has been done there, curbs, sidewalks, landscaping, the building, safe area to come and go, and in a sense, you're being held up by an entity that you have no control over. So I'm in favor of approving this.
Mr. Ryder?
Yeah, thank you. I will agree with Mr. Fowler. I think opening up the entrance in off of 38 is going to allow, to mitigate some traffic off of Victor Drive with buses. Ultimately, that is going to be the entrance, preferred entrance for most people coming from Wilmington, that end, or that end of Tuxbury. I, you know, I think that might cut down a little traffic on Victor Drive. I would explore opening up that right lane. It could be months, if, my past experience, I've had, it's been six or eight months before I've had to have a pole moved, so I think anything you can do to get traffic in and out of there quickly, without impacting that signal up on Victor Drive, or the access in and out of there with buses, after-school programs, and evening events, I think that would help.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to agree with last Mr. Fowler, you know, we had a lot of conversations about the traffic, and one of the reasons why you have the entrances in those both places was to alleviate that. I think by allowing the facility to open, we remove one of the pressures of getting the pole moved from existing. And, you know, like they said, you know, how long it goes before they bother to remove the pole is really up to them, but some of that pressure is removed once the facility's opened.
Yeah, true.
So, you know, at least having that entrance out there off 38 or one direction, even if it uses internal temporary signage, just to, you know, remind people that they can't exit, you know, that it's entrance only, one way, whatever you've got to do, that it's going to alleviate whatever wrong it alleviates. It's that much more that isn't coming up to that light, that isn't turning right onto Victor, you know, unnecessarily, when there's a perfectly good entrance at least, that could be used. And the Jersey barriers, you know, can be reconfigured.
Yes, right.
They're going to protect the pole, which, you know, oddly enough, will probably cause it to be there that much longer, with the winter coming up, that if the Jersey barrier is worth the way. But, you know, I think to close both the entrance and the exit for a problem that's really, you know, pretty significantly just to the exit side, you know, it's, it's increasing the traffic problem unnecessarily, and I think that it would be better to open that side and, you know, use the signage that's necessary, you know, and the Jersey barrier set up, whatever way necessary, to make sure that people are, you know, are not trying to use it, you know, for anything other than the entrance. But I think not to use it, it would be a waste at this point, especially, you know, in the winter months, you know, we don't need people, you know, zipping by and then, oh, now I'm up at the light, and, you know, adding to anything, when they could have just easily already been. I'll agree with that. So, any other comments from anyone?
Mr. Chairman, I did have one more comment. I just hope it never happens, but I could possibly envision somebody coming out that way, and a car going in that way at the same time, if, if we use that for that entrance, you know, with, you know, people being confused or something, because that's the way they came in, maybe they want to go out that way, you know, and I'd hate to see it be, be an accident of backing up onto 38, and now cars having to back out or something, so, I mean, I understand their concerns, and I, and I kind of agree, but I just hate to see that happen, where somebody goes in and someone's trying to come out, and there was a problem, but hopefully it never happens. That's all.
So, but, and again, I think to that, you know, the internal signage will be necessary if you want to use that entrance, it's going to have to be, you know, whether it's temporary or whatever.
Sure, right, some additional signage, right.
In the meantime, to tell people it's not, they're not to go that way. So, all right, okay, so with that, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to approve the temporary.
The nonsubstantial change request?
For the temporary occupancy permit.
All right, so, okay, so we're approving the nonsubstantial change request in regards to the driveway at this point. And do we, will include?
I'd like to include the entrance, keeping the entrance off of 38, entering the facility from 38.
38, okay.
Could I add a caveat to that, if I may?
Sure, absolutely.
Put the burden upon the engineers, and make sure that they design a method in which, what Mr. Fattaya was saying, does not happen, by putting the Jersey barrier up at the other end, and hone it off, barrel it off, whatever you want to do.
Okay, yeah, I think we can do that.
And signage, it's got to have signage that tells you, you can't go that way.
Okay.
Temporary is fine, but in the, in the, for the time being, it's got to be there to make sure people aren't going to try and use it as an exit.
Right.
All right?
Yep.
Okay, so we've got a motion made, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, good luck with your opening.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to agenda item C, 2131 Main Street, special permit, site plan, special permit, South Village Overlay District, special permit. Do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
Public reading.
Motion made, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Excuse me, Mr.?
Yep. The lady returns. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Andy Street, Civil Design Consultants.
I'm John Feneris, I'm one of the partners.
I'm Christopher Fory, one of the other partners.
Let's give it one second, let's go this way back. Thank you. All right, floor is yours, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm here on behalf of the applicant's BT GOG LLC to present this project. This is at 2131 Main Street, tax map 96, lot 53. The parcel is located in the commercial zone, towards the front of the parcel here, is in the commercial zone, abutted by commercial zone on either side here and here. The top piece of this parcel, this rectangle at the top, is in the R40 zone, surrounded by multifamily zones around the edges there. The entirety of the parcel is located in the South Village Overlay District. The parcel itself is 2.6 acres in size, has frontage along Main Street, with a wetland system located along the northern property line here, buffer zones extending onto the site. Those wetlands were flagged in September of 2018. Currently, there's, there are no buildings on the site. The site's accessed by two curb cuts on Main Street, and there's a degraded parking area towards the front of the parcel. The middle and rear of the parcel also looks somewhat degraded. In 2010, there was a, an approval for another project there, that was a mixed-use retail restaurant, really of similar footprint to what we're presenting today. That was approved both here and at Conservation. The developers put in a small detention pond towards the rear of the parcel, and they started construction of the building before ultimately abandoning the project and taking down whatever construction that they had. But there's certainly some, some degradation there. There's some surrounding trees along the perimeter, there's some larger trees that do exist, but for the most part, it's fairly degraded. In addition to those, there's a, there's a way called the Oak Street Way that extends more or less through this portion here. It's, exists solely on this particular parcel. We've had a land use attorney, Catherine Moran, a land use attorney, has looked into this, researched it, issued, I guess you'd call an informal opinion, she hasn't written a formal document, but has issued an opinion, actually, I have copies of that email, if it's useful, I can deliver those to the board, in which she describes, there's essentially no existing rights. I'm not an attorney, I'll butcher her language, but there's no existing rights to that way. It ends on either side of the parcel and has no, doesn't, for all intents and purposes, doesn't exist anymore, and I can pass this up. So, as I said, she says it much better than I could, but the gist of it is, is that way has no essentially legal standing, any rights of way existing in Oak Street, that's, they're essentially gone, and likely disappeared as part of the condominium development surrounding it. This topic has come up, dealing both with this board and also with the town, as we work through the, with town officials as well. So, in addition to this process, we'll also, we've started the conservation process, we were before them on the second last week. Mass High will get, will be getting involved, and this project, largely of a similar layout, was brought to this board in September of 2018. At that time, we originally started with 25 townhouse-style units in a very similar configuration to what you see today. That was scaled back to 22, we presented that to this board, got some, some feedback here, we also got feedback at a conceptual IDR meeting with, with town officials. Kind of the, the broad strokes of some of that feedback was the project was too dense, units were too small, wanted some more architectural detail to see how it all fit together, all of which was incorporated into the design that you, that is before you today. So we have consolidated these two curb cuts to a single curb cut that will access the driveway that leads to the site. We have essentially three structures. The structure on the left-hand side of the driveway, and at the top of the driveway are both, consist of townhouse-style units. There are another row of townhouse-style units here, and then a 2,000-square-foot commercial space towards the front of the parcel on Main Street there. In total, that's 22 townhouse units, I'm sorry, 19 townhouse-style units, I'm looking at the wrong portion of my notes. We're down from 22 to 19 townhouse units that are 21 by 36, and a footprint for 756 square feet. Parking for each unit will be stacked, there's one space proposed inside each of the units with the second in tandem behind that one. We've provided some guest parking in this area here, there's five guest spaces, we've provided above Building 1, between Building 1 and Building 2, and there's also 10 spaces provided for the commercial piece here. And those 10 spaces assume that it's a retail facility, so it's the more restrictive of the parking requirements, where this to be something else, we could, less would be required. But we've gone, with no tenant currently identified, we've designed, overdesigned it, we think. Landscape plan was prepared by Weinmeier J. They've done several plans for similar projects in this town, and have prepared a landscape plan, which is included in your package there, and submitted, the goal being to both meet the village, village residential guidelines, and provide some screening along Main Street and to abutting parcels. Snow storage is provided up above Building 1 here, and, you know, of course, in the event that that's exceeded, or if snow cannot reach that, it will be, it will be trucked off-site. Private trash pickup is now proposed for the commercial piece as well. Originally, we had a dumpster, we have eliminated the dumpster, and the trash will be picked up privately for that, for that facility there. Sidewalks along Main Street, and bike racks, a couple of bike racks are shown on the site, all of which to encourage connectivity through the, through the town and multimodal transportation opportunities for the, for the residents and the guests who would visit there. From a utility perspective, water, gas, and essentially electric all come from, from Main Street. There's sufficient capacity there, the town engineer has reviewed this, did not comment on capacity concerns. Sewer, however, is not available on Main Street, and there is a sewer easement that runs along the southern property line here, and we propose to tie into that sewer main to provide sewer service to these buildings. That's, that's a similar configuration to the development from 2010, that also tied into that, that sewer main. Stormwater is captured in catch basins, piped through manholes into subsurface infiltration facilities, two of which are proposed, one here and one here. That's for parking lot and some roof area, a third one dedicated to the roof of Building 1 is located behind Building 1 here. Those systems are designed, capture, treat, infiltrate stormwater. Ultimately, there's some discharges towards the wetlands, but we treat water and reduce flows to those wetlands and ultimately off-site. So to date, we've received review letters, we've, we've got a letter from the local housing partnership that discusses the affordable requirements for this project. Three units are required, and three will be provided as part of the development. The town's traffic engineer, TEC, has weighed in, we have their comment letter, as well as Ms. McGinty, the town planner, DPW, all of which we've received. In our opinion, I don't, I don't see anything there that, that we can't work through. There's some, some comments there certainly that we need to address, but nothing, nothing we can't handle with the appropriate reviewer. We've also heard from some of Butters, particularly at the Conservation meeting, there were some of Butters from the, the development, development behind here, there was some discussion. There was some discussion then about providing some, working with them to come up with a way to provide some additional screening, really, some additional protection. Be good neighbors was kind of the way it was phrased, and figure out a way to work together so the impact of the development on what is currently an empty site is mitigated. So, those discussions are ongoing. The applicant is willing and has open lines of communication with them, so we'll continue to work through that process. We also got a letter from the Building Commissioner. I would very much like to walk through those bullets if there's some time, if it pleases the board. Some of those were, I thought, worthy of calling particular attention to. So, the first bullet talks about the existing road on the site plan. That's the Oak Street Way, which I've spoken about and delivered the copy of that email there. The second bullet references the mixed-use requirements, essentially saying that the residential piece of this development needs to act as a component of the commercial, of a commercial development. That's what makes a mixed-use development, is his interpretation, that it's a commercial development with a residential piece. In my interpretation of the regulations, in Section 8644, the mixed-use development consists of, in this particular instance, multiple buildings where there's a component of residential and a component of commercial. There's no, I guess, primary component, is how I would read that, where one is a piece of the other. They're both a piece of a mixed-use development. It's not a commercial development with a residential, residential with commercial. They're both a component of the entire development. So, certainly hope to get some feedback, but I just, to get my views on that and all. The next piece talks about the parking requirements, where he refers to, Mr. Johnson refers to the Appendix C, which is the Table of Parking Requirements. And his contention is that covered parking is not allowed per the zoning, as he references Appendix C. And I believe what he's referencing is that if you look at Appendix C, for single and two-family dwellings, there's a specific requirement to provide one covered space. That's specifically referenced, but when you get to a multifamily dwelling, there is no reference to covered spaces at all, whether it's required or not required. I would interpret that as it being allowed, not disallowed. And I would also say that what we're proposing here is a garage. I mean, this is not a covered parking structure or anything like that. This is essentially a home with a garage space. So, I would somewhat refute that claim that covered parking, one, is not allowed, but two, even applies in this situation, given that we're providing garages there. And further, if that is something that the board feels is not allowed, or if it's felt that Mr. Johnson has authority here, it is something that can be waived per 9415 of the zoning, too. That's specifically called out as something that the board can grant a waiver for with the parking table. The next bullet touches on the height, the waiver for height that we are requesting. As with other projects that have been approved by this board and even brought before by this office, we're requesting three stories, but at the 35 feet, 35-foot height. So, the requirement is two and a half stories and 35 feet. We would like to request three stories without exceeding the 35-foot requirement. That's the waiver we're requesting. So, this is in line with several other similar townhouse-style developments that have been approved. Reserve parking is the next bullet in Section 9480. Again, in my interpretation, reserve parking in that section references parking spaces that are dedicated when a decrease in, from the required parking is requested. In this case, we have more than adequate parking per the zoning regulations. There's two spaces per unit. We have guest parking, which is not a requirement and is acts as almost a bonus on top of what is required. We have 10 commercial spaces, when in all likelihood, it won't be a retail facility there, and we'll have excess parking there as well. So, the idea that we need reserve parking and haven't provided it, I don't agree with that necessarily either, because we're not asking for a decrease in, from the required parking. A lighting plan. We do not show lighting at this time. My view is to work with the architects largely to light the buildings. I'm not sure if formal lighting and poles is something that fits the site well. If it is something that's provided, it'll certainly comply with the village residential guidelines. It'll be dark-skY friendly and appropriate for this site. And then, snow storage, not complying with the Tewksbury Bylaw. My guess is that we show some landscaping in and around the snow storage areas that I assume is the reference, but I'm not entirely sure what that is, but hopefully, we can discuss that as we move forward tonight. So, I guess, just to summarize, this is a development of similar footprint of something that has been approved in the past, albeit a different use. It's also one that's consistent with several others that have been approved, this idea of townhouse-style units with a commercial component attached to it. From a density perspective, we're at about seven and a half units per acre. If you look at across, more or less across the street, 2230 got approved, about 18 units an acre, 1455, was that about 11 units an acre? So, we're kind of right, we're actually, well, we're below those, but kind of right in that range of past projects that have come through. The affordable is certainly going to be provided. I know that's an important topic with the town. Three units will be provided as requested. And I, overall, you know, it's generally consistent with the similar projects in the past and the Bylaw in general. So, I appreciate your time, and the three of us are here to answer any questions that you may have.
I think, well, because there is a traffic portion to this, but we have the traffic consultant here, I'm going to take that separate. I'll let the board go through what we've gone through now, and then just discuss the traffic.
Sure.
As its own issue separately, because I think it makes more sense. Otherwise, I think it gets lost in the shuffle. So, with that, Mr. Fattaya?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see a number of outstanding comments from Mr. Pottman. I'll always stand with those.
We received those comments Friday, so we've reviewed them. We feel we're in a position to address them. I don't see anything that we can't address and work through, but that would, all of those will be addressed in the next submission. We have those. We just got a wetlands letter today. You know, all these comments are coming in that will be in the next round of documents.
I'm looking at some of the notes from a past meeting in September regarding density, and it seems like the majority of the board members at the time were, you know, on the presumption that there's too many units here. You know, I'm still along the same lines that. You know, the density as far as 2.6 acre lot, right?
Correct, yep.
I'm still looking at it. I'm not a big fan of the residential being attached to the commercial rather than having it being its own freestanding building. I think that would be something that I would like to see in this project. I don't know why you couldn't push everything back towards the rear of it, but, I mean, you have what you have in front of us, so I don't agree with it. I think it's too dense for the area. You are familiar, I mean, your partners are here with you as far as the other units that are all approved in town, that are some vacant and some not developed yet, but, you know, I'm worried about the saturation of the town as far as the units are concerned. You know, allowing too many units to come into the town, you know, and adding another development there as well. So, you are, Cross Street's already been approved, two lots over there, other spots in town already approved, as far as that goes. So, again, I'm making that to you gentlemen here in front of us, so. And I'm actually concerned with the overall, you know, development. But I'll leave some more comments for later.
Mr. Delaney?
I had a conversation with Mr. Ryder before we come in. Before, him and I have basically the same things to say, so I let, Mr. Ryder, let him do his thing.
This feels very supreme.
I would agree. Because I want to agree with what Mr. Ryder says.
Mr. Ryder, I'm going to let you talk all the time. Mr. Ryder, I'll let you go next.
Well, I, first, I'll start with, there's one, you know, you want to call it the elephant in the room, the existing road. The opinion that you have from the attorney is ultimately just an opinion right now, nothing legal standing. So, I think, first and foremost, nothing can be voted on or approved, or, in my opinion, be considered until we know that that road is non-existent or is not within the deed. Because if that is, in fact, within the deed, I mean, we're not, we're talking about a whole nother issue here. So, but, yeah, but moving forward, you mean?
Yeah, I think, while this is going on, I'm upset, we're not going to stop the process of this, but I think in the meantime, we're going to have to get a decision from Town Council, just that they concur with the, with the opinion that's come in. Again, because that's the only one that's going to matter to us or matter to building permits or any of that. I mean, we can take the opinion from the attorney as being the more likely outcome, but it has no weight, and I'm sure the building inspector's going to have an issue with issuing building permits without some confirmation for, you know, internally, that that reading of, you know, what the attorney had is accurate.
Certainly.
Well, likely, if it's an internal paper street, you know, it probably doesn't exist anymore and doesn't hold any rights to anyone, but, you know, it's appearing at this point. We just had a different one, where we sent someone back on a, on a in-law apartment, because we needed some sort of confirmation of information we weren't sure about. So, I think that it'll be everybody's interest that, you know, running parallel to this, that we're getting an opinion from Town Council that they agree with that assessment from the attorney.
And there is a formal legal opinion, legal document, as opposed to a copy of the email coming, that would certainly, you know, at least supplement Town Council's own review. So, we'll submit.
I think Mr. Ryder's point, anything we do, I can't imagine, I mean, at worst or at best, depending on your point of view, any decision we made would be contingent on that final piece being resolved. So, we can go forward, but that's going to be a piece that's going to hold up everything until you get an answer.
Absolutely. Every time I've seen, yeah, yeah. Every time I've seen the Building Commissioner, it's come up, so it's certainly hot.
I'm sorry, I continue, sorry, Mr. Chairman. Can I just say something? I think, you know, where else do I start? When you state there's 10 spots for the commercial parking, unknown of the commercial property that can go in there, 10 may be sufficient, 10 may not be sufficient. So, when you raise that point, that that's the unknown, that is an unknown, so that 10, when you say there's ample parking for extra parking, that may not be the case, based upon what commercial component goes into that unit. Then you get into what Mr. Johnson, the Building Commissioner, states. I mean, I've read over that Appendix C multiple times. I mean, I tend to agree with the way his interpretation is. It's just my opinion. I think that may be something that we'll have to get a legal opinion on as well. On my opinion versus how you interpret, and I think that's something we may need to get a legal opinion on, interpretation of that parking, as well as, I'll echo what Mr. Fattaya said, the elevation I'm concerned with in that area, the density within that area. Yeah, I just, I'm having a hard time seeing that fit within that site. I think you've got a lot of work to show us, to come back with us in the next, in your next round, but I'd like to see, you know, just the layout, your first building to your left when you enter, that bottom unit. You're looking at potential accident of somebody backing out. If somebody's backing out of that first unit, you're ultimately backing into the entrance and exit. I'm concerned with fire and public safety apparatus coming in. There's no ultimate turnaround at the end. Basically, have to back that, any emergency apparatus back out onto Route 38, which is a concern. Snow storage. You show snow storage to left-hand side of first building on the left, which you ultimately have to cross over. Looks like a sidewalk where you have your bike rack.
There's no sidewalk, but we do show, yes, up in here.
That left-hand?
Here?
Okay, yep.
Yeah, no, no sidewalk.
There's no sidewalk there?
Correct.
Your bike rack is to the?
Bike rack. Bike rack is shown here.
On this plan here, you're showing, it looks like your snow storage is to the left of the parking spaces, your spare parking?
Here, correct.
That's not a raised curb there?
It is a curb, yes.
So, ultimately, you have to carry up over the curb and?
Correct.
I'm concerned with that causing, you know, consistent damage with every spring having to address the grounds in that property. Let me see if I got everything here. And also, too, the private trash, I'm concerned with depending upon what type of business you have there. You're limiting yourself what you can put in there by not having any trash facility on-site, so I think that can become a nuisance with any, if you have residential near that parcel. So, that being said, I think I touched on a few things, or more than a few, so.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, can I respond? Absolutely. So, I guess, you know, most of these items that were raised from the parking to the snow, you know, for the private trash, all of which have been presented and approved in very similar fashions in other developments, very recent developments. So, you mentioned a lot of work to do to come back. I can certainly see some of your concerns, but I'm not, I don't know if I have a clear direction on where to take this, because we've reduced density. Density is lower here than it is on many other sites, even just across the street. It's much, much lower. We can certainly take care of the Oak Street Way. We'll submit a formal document there. There is a fire truck turning figure. That truck can make that turn, and that hammerhead there can pull forward, back out. The comment about the car backing out of that first unit that was raised by the Town's Traffic Engineer as well, I can somewhat understand, at the same time, that car will, I would think, tend to back out into the exit lane as opposed to into oncoming traffic. I doubt there are many trips from that unit upwards into the site to go, I don't know, visit a friend or something like that. So, that car should stay out of incoming traffic, assuming they can, you know, they can, they have the room to make that movement, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. It's, I mean, it's a 12-foot drive aisle, where, so.
Ultimately, it's, you know, you are back, it's a 24-foot wide entrance. You're ultimately backing a vehicle of, you know, 11, 12 feet back into that. You potentially, there is potential for an impact there, and that was in the traffic report.
Certainly.
So, I think some of the bigger things are the parking, as well as the waiver on the stories. So, I think those are my concerns right now, so.
Mr. Foul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A lot of what Mr. Ryder has said, on my mind also, and thought about some of these. Number one, parking is generally, we want the parking to be in the rear of a commercial building. Go up and down Main Street, that's what you see in any of the new ones, behind the building. Obviously, that's easy to do, pull it away, and because, and the second thing was, I didn't, couldn't understand why you would attach it to a residential building. That kind of precludes you from having a restaurant or anything like that, because now you've got the smell of food cooking or exhausting right next to, attached to, a residential building. That's number one. Number two, the one that Mr. Ryder brought up about building, number 19, the last building, I think is obviously too close to Route 38. I think you're looking for trouble. You could flip that to the other end of that.
Cannot, not without crossing the zoning setback.
Not without what?
Not without going over the zoning setback. We have a 50-
Not without going over the zoning setback. We have a 50-foot, are you talking about putting this unit up here? So there's a 50, because this is a multi-family, multi-family district here, we have a 50-foot setback. So the top of that building, one, the top corner, is really more or less at the zoning setback, because it's, it's increased because we're budding a residential district. So we could ask for, for relief from that, I suppose, but to comply with zoning, we can't, we can't fit that unit there.
So that means because you can't get all the building you want, you don't want to comply?
Well, we do comply now.
But I think it's unsafe.
Well, well, that's a different disguise. I guess I'm saying from a zoning perspective, we comply, whereas our building fits in the envelope, I guess, is what I'm saying.
I'll just keep that in mind. The stories, when you call the stories of the residential building three stories, name them, if you could.
It would be a garage on the bottom level?
It's the first story.
That would be the first story, correct. Then you have two levels of living space above that.
You mentioned that a lot of people in the, in the audience, for story building, none of them, all right, it wasn't explained to their, their liking, I'm sure, that it would be a garage and two residential floors above that.
Yep.
Because the rival son in Tuxbury, who were built 35, 40 years ago, of three stories above grade.
No, gee, not the intent here. No, this is, this is 35 feet. It's, it's the height requirement, that, just not the story requirement.
About 100.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Another reason I thought complying with the, the zoning, or how it was written up, having the commercial building out front, parking in the back, would allow you to deliver in the back of the building, which, delivering now in the front of the building. And that would stop people from walking in, whereas you could still have front doors, even though there's no parking there, for the handicap people, entrance in. And I'm not too sure on the component issue, if that, to me, holds water, not from your viewpoint. And I'll talk to the bill inspector about that. Not that I'm right, but I'll talk to him about it. For now, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
If I may, for one more second, Mr. Chairman, is that, just, just regarding the, the use of that commercial space and the parking that goes with it, I mean, we've, there won't be a restaurant, right? There's no restaurant. So we have, we have added parking per the zoning code for a retail facility. So the most required parking will be for retail. If this backs off to professional office or something like that, where it's a less restrictive zoning code, then we'll have more parking than is required. And we won't have a use that requires more parking than either of those things. That, that's what we're presenting here today. So there won't be a restaurant and there won't be another use. It's either a retail, which is what this is designed for, or it's something that falls into the one per, per 300 square foot category. So we, we will have enough parking, or we will be back here with some sort of change request, but that, that's what we're, that's what we're proposing, and that's what, what we provided.
Mr. Fallow, you all set?
All set. All right. Since that was the last thing you spoke about, I'll just, I'll hit that one first, but that was my understanding, is that this is the most, the highest requirement in parking that we would have. I, I can't name very many times where we've approved a project like this where we've already known what the use was going to be. So if we can't require any more parking than what's there, then I'm not sure what type of use you'd have that would require us to ask you for more parking.
Correct. That is the intent, yeah.
I'm not overly concerned with that. That may be the end of my not concerns, but, I mean, not knowing what it's going to be there, there's no higher number for us to ask you to set aside. So I'm, I'm not really sure why, what we would do beyond that. I do not disagree with the other members that Unit 19 poses a problem with where it's, where it's situated, because not, we mentioned the backing out, but there's also pulling in. If you drive in and pull in headfirst, okay, you're done, but that means you're going to be backing out later, okay? If you decide that you're going to do what you're really supposed to do in most cases, is back in to your driveway so that you can pull out, that means you're doing some sort of maneuver right there in the middle of the entrance, exit, and where the commercial piece is possibly having people coming in and out. That's a problem. I mean, you basically have a car that's doing a 360 one way or the other at some point during the day in that area. So I mean, it is a possible problem, that, that, that's a lot going on right as people are trying to get in off of 38. Obviously, they're getting off 38 is the biggest problem, not somebody who's internal to the site. They'd simply have to wait till you're done doing what you're doing. But if you're coming down 38 and you decide, I'm going in there, and what you find is somebody in the middle of a three-point turn, it's a bit of a problem. So while I understand your setback issue on the other end, I would think that the, the more practical would be, I mean, it's not like you're not asking for waivers as it is. Whether we give it or not, that's a different issue, but asking for it by flipping it to the other end just seems to make more sense in terms of, the, the number one thing is the safety concern in that front area for that first unit. I think it's going to outweigh, I'm not speaking for anybody else, but to me, I'd be more apt to give you the waiver on the other end of the building than to give you the unit on this end just because it fits the zoning requirement. I just think it's not safe. I mean, if the whole site was a different configuration, maybe, you know, a lot of it has to do with where this driveway is. I mean, putting it right on top of that first unit's driveway. I think that's, you know, maybe there won't be a problem, but I can foresee that there could be, and obviously, that's what we're going to address more likely than, you know, hoping that there won't be. So that's one. You know, the snow storage thing, I mean, we have, we have had snow storage where, you know, because of this, the sites, you know, we, we put the requirement in that if you damage the landscaping, it's going to have to be dealt with, you know, whether it's every spring or not. I, I, I am potentially forgetting. I don't remember if we've had it where, the only way for you to get to the snow storage area, though, is to go across the parking, the, the, the visitor parking like that, because if there is visitors there parking, you're going to have a hard time storing your snow or getting to where you need to store your snow. So I'm not really sure what the, 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 what the, what the cure for that is, but, you know, if you have people with a few visitors there and you have a snowstorm, how are you getting the snow to that snow, snow storage area? I mean, the majority of that snow storage area looks like you'd want to get through it through the parking spaces, but you might even put some from down the end, but I mean, that's it. Otherwise, you're kind of precluded from getting to it, which is, you know, a bit of a problem. I mean, generally, I think in the past, we've had a snow storage area that was also a landscape area, but generally, you could get right to it. You wouldn't have something in your way, or potentially something in the way, in this case, vehicles.
Can I address that? So, so would, would, just, just thinking out loud, more or less, but if there was some sort of, seeing that that parking is not required, if there was some sort of time restriction, you know, there's certain parts of town, I'm sure that you can't park in certain spots from November to, to February or something like that. You know, the intent of that commercial space is to have a tenant or, or owner or user that, that is, you know, a nine-to-five-ish, something like that. So there's 10 spaces there that are available evenings, you know, someone has a party, they, they park there. If those spaces were restricted, or even if it was in the event of a snowstorm, restrict to those through signage or, or other means to allow proper access to the snow storage, just, just an idea, consideration of, of a way to maintain that access to snow, people still have all their usual parking.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't have, I don't have an absolute issue with it. I mean, I'm, I'm sort of, I don't like the idea internally like that, having somebody, you know, if you have a visitor that's staying overnight, basically having those people find their car towed in the morning.
Right.
Because, you know, there was snow storage that needed to be dealt with. You know what I mean? It's just, it's a double use in that area that makes things difficult. You know, I'm not saying you can't do it. I'm just saying, well, you know, I know they're not required, but we pretty much require, you know, visitor parking in these things because we know people are going to have visitors.
Right.
So I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a real world problem, not a bylaw problem. So that, that is, that is somewhat of an issue in, you know, in the access to the snow storage area. I, I see Mr. Fallow's comment on the commercial building as well. That does seem to be our, the more, more often now is the commercial building is at the front with the parking behind it. You know, I don't know. I, I, I'm not, again, it's not an absolute to me. I mean, I, I hear what Mr. Fallow's saying, so I'm not, you know, I, I, I'm okay either way I guess, but I can't.
It's something we're going to look at. We're going to look at that.
It does make it look better, to be completely honest. When, when the commercial building is what you see on the street and the parking's behind it, it just, it looks better. And I think that's been fairly consistent with most of the developments lately. You know, and it, it does give that sort of separation between the two. Although, if you're not using it as food, I understand it doesn't have to be as much. You know, sometimes the commercial space is the bottom floor of a two-story building. So I mean, you know, they don't have to be detached.
If I may on that one too, that, that we are going to, that came up in Ms. McGinty's letter as well. It's something we're going to look at, that kind of layout is, is flipping those and seeing how that can provide. It's, it's in the guidelines as well. That's the intent of these parking areas if, when possible. So we, we will have something put together for that.
I mean, also too, I mean, it's, you know, if it flips to the back, you're also alleviating that, you know, the cars right there coming off of 38, immediately coming in contact with a car that wants to come out of that commercial parking area to leave. Whether that car's coming to the commercial area or it's a resident that's coming in, you know, you're not going to have that log jam right there at the front, you know, as it, as it exists now, setting aside, obviously, Building 19. I think that's generally it. The only thing I will note on the lighting is that while we don't always have lighting players up front, the one thing I will say with these, one, we've had an issue with where light poles have been put in some of these, so we want to make sure that that's not going to be an issue. So if we don't see one, I would suspect that we're going to make sure we make a comment of where they cannot be. However, the other thing too, is from a decorative standpoint, we have had or asked that certain types of lighting be used because of how they look. Not so much about spillage and all that. It's more in keeping with trying to have that village, you know, when we've asked for like sort of those older fashion type light poles, just because of how they look, not for any other reason. So not having those, you know, in the, in the renderings or anything like that does detract from maybe something that we might look at and say, oh, we like that. I see what you're doing. That makes sense. You're, you're, you're trying to comply with what we're talking about. So from that perspective on lighting, you know, not necessarily spill rates and all that, but more from a, a aesthetics.
Sure.
It can be useful to us. You know, you maybe take a look at, like, you know, you've, you've referenced some of the other projects. Take a look at some of the, the more recent ones, because I think we've included that in some of those.
Sure.
You know, I'm, on, as far as the building inspector's letter, I mean, I'll, you know, I'm going to plead, you know, no comment on some of these for now, only in that I understand that the South Village overlay district is one of these overlay districts as opposed to any of the others. So the, the little bits and pieces that are different may be what's resulting in some of these comments. What I will say is that there's nothing commented on here that I don't think we've already done elsewhere. And that's why I'm confused in that, seeing them, I don't know, there's nothing that's in this that isn't something we've already approved in other overlays, and I'm not even sure we haven't already approved down here. So I'm going to have to look at this more and get more information, but, you know, that's a separate issue. It's not necessarily your issue right now, but some of them I'm, I'm confused by. So I'll leave it at that. I think, why don't we take the parking now, because I think if we call up residents at this point, some of them are going to start talking about, no, I'm sorry, traffic, and we haven't discussed it yet, which will make things more confused. So what I will do at this point is I'm going to ask the traffic consultant to come up to the podium and just give us an overview of their, their comments on the traffic.
Good evening. I'm Liz Altman.
Hold the light, let you see again, there you go.
Hello? Hi. I'm Liz Altman. I'm a senior traffic engineer with TEC Engineering.
Okay. Before you start, just for everybody's perspective, who do you work for?
TEC engineer, oh, and we work, we were retained by the, the planning board.
Okay, you work for the town, not the petition?
Correct.
Very good. Thank you.
We reviewed the traffic engineering report that was prepared by the applicant's traffic engineer. We also took a look at the site plan as part of our review for the town. Generally speaking, 19 town home units and 2,000 square feet of retail is not a big traffic generator. We're less than 100 vehicles per day for the townhouses and about 80 vehicles per day or trips per day for the commercial space as a, as a retail facility. If it's used as an office, it's about the same amount of traffic during that, for that 2,000 square feet. So from a traffic standpoint, and as far as the report prepared by Mr. Mueller and associates, we don't, we agree that this development will not have a significant impact on the adjacent street system. Any delays for vehicles exiting the site will be onsite. They're, they're projecting one per, one vehicle queue during the peak hours. Might get two, in my opinion. So as far as off-site mitigation, no left turn is, lane is required on Route 38. This is a required, is a state highway, so they will have to get approval from the state for their access. They will have to get an access permit. So as far as the traffic is concerned, they did their report properly, and I agree with their results. As far as the site plan, I don't have a lot of additional comments to what I've already heard from the board. You've already told, you know, discussed the concern I had with the entrance driveway and the, there's a lot going on right at one location with the townhouse driveway and the entrance to the commercial. I will also bring up that there's not a very good pedestrian connectivity through this site. You have residents, they might have dogs, they might have kids. You have a very nice sidewalk along Route 38 that there is being proposed, but all residents who want to get down to that sidewalk are walking in the main drive aisle. They're not, there's no protection of pedestrians between the vehicles and the pedestrian space. I think we did have, mentioned a concern with the circulation of the fire vehicles. They do, according to the plan prepared by the applicant, that they do appear to take up pretty much the whole entrance and exit driveway when they're coming in and out. If that's acceptable to your fire department, I'll defer to them, but if you have to cross the double yellow line of Route 38, that's not my favorite way for a, a fire engine to enter, because then they could conflict with somebody who's already on the driveway and can't get out of their way or, you know, because they can't maneuver in this space. Did you have any specific questions for me as far as traffic went when you read the reports?
Any members have any questions?
I have, yeah. When you're on Route 38 at four o'clock at night, and you're coming down that hill by Budros or whatever, if somebody wants to make, what is it, a left-hand turn into that parking lot with the traffic coming the other way, all it takes is one car to try to make a turn and stop, and you're going to back. a turn and stop, and you're going to back up 30 cars or 40 cars on the other side of the road going towards one. You know, the traffic study shows ins and outs, but it doesn't show what really happens with the in or the out in that particular instance.
Correct.
You can have two people come in, two people can back up the cars all the way to the set of lights of the Long Chashin Street.
Correct. Right. If somebody is part, is trying to make a left into here. The analysis shows that they're not going to have a lot of delay, but having driven on this road, if somebody doesn't pull towards the center line, that will block the through traffic along 38. I don't disagree with that statement.
Okay, so the thing is, you know, when you give us a traffic study, the impact of one car making a left-hand turn at 4:30 at night impacts the whole Route 38 process. There's no deceleration. There's nothing.
That's true. There's a, a large number of commercial driveways along this area. That would be something that would have to be taken up with the state if you wanted to ask them to put in a left turn lane or any kind of deceleration lanes. It doesn't warrant it from the volume of traffic that's generated by the site.
Just trying to use some common sense with it. Okay?
I don't, I don't disagree that if a person stops and is making a left, that they, that people will queue behind them if there, if there's no room for them to pass on the shoulder.
You know, even the person coming along, if he goes to make the right-hand turn in there and somebody's trying to back out of that first parking space, he's going to have to stop.
Correct.
He's going to probably be, either this car is going to be on Route 38.
Correct.
Which stops the traffic again. You know, they, I, I just don't see the entrance being big enough to do everything that they want it to do.
Correct.
And I'm looking at a traffic thing and a, what is it? Is the right words? Okay, the impact is got to be, I don't know. I just don't see a 24-foot space.
The 24-foot, it is in accordance with Mastah requirements for driveways. So, but I, like I said, I don't disagree with this conflict point here. Phrase it as a concern.
All right. One more second. Thanks. Anybody else?
Can I speak to that, Mr. Chairman? So, so, I mean, the, the traffic study looks at, as, as you well know, I mean, it's available data. It doesn't look at every individual scenario, but the, the high amount of traffic, I mean, that's common, that's how it exists on Main Street today and, and up and down, even the condominiums next door. I mean, that's, that's part of the concern. I mean, if that, if the idea that, what you're saying would preclude any sort of development, I guess, if, if the concern is anywhere on Main Street, I mean, that's, that's the way it is. You know, I mean, this is a very low impact in the terms of traffic during the peak times, which you're describing on, on Main Street itself.
Is 24 feet, you know, if you have two cars there and somebody trying to make a turn has the blinker on and this guy, you know, it's an individual scenario. I'm just looking at the way the traffic could back up on to Route 38, okay, common sense-wise. And common sense says the traffic will back up. Because I drive that road every day, but. Okay. One more second.
One more comment here as well, ADA compliant accessible ramps, is that?
True. They are not shown on, on the site plan at this time, ramps in a crosswalk. They probably will be required by the state, I would think.
So, if I may, the, the past developments we've done in Tewksbury and Main Street, they've wanted essentially straight across instead of sloping down to a ramp and crossing the driveway. They requested we come up steeply and have the sidewalk be all but level. So, there's no ramp per se. They've actually had us take those off of past projects here. So, the idea is it's ADA accessible across the driveway, just not in the form of a traditional handicap ramp. The crosswalk, we can certainly stripe. That was something we don't show, but it is ADA accessible across the driveway on that sidewalk.
One more question. In the visitors' parking, in the visitors' parking area, you don't have a handicap space if anybody is handicapped to visit. You just have straight parking lot across. Is there a way that you can put a handicap parking space there? Okay, because they have to be wider, most naturally, for people to get out with a wheelchair or something. I'm sure that these units, somebody will have a handicapped person eventually visiting.
We can do that, yes. Yeah.
Rather than have you stand up there, because you'll, you'll be moving aside for comments in a second, you just, you'll come back to the audience, and then if there's anything for you to respond to, we'll have you come back up.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, I will open up this to public for any questions, comments, or concerns, if anybody has any, please come up.
How you doing tonight? Mark Krappman, Eight Sunset Road. I live directly behind Budros, right where this is. A year ago, we were sitting out here, and we had four empty parcels on 38. Now, we're going to have three of those parcels with major developments on there. I understand we're doing a traffic study that says this individual development is minor traffic, but on 38, anybody that drives that road, four o'clock, you can't even move. Now, we're building a four-story apartment building on one of the lots. We're building residential and commercial on the one next to Donner's Donuts. Now, we want to put in 19 townhouses and a commercial development in another parcel, and the other parcel's right across the street. And I'm sure as soon as this one's done, somebody's been going in there. I understand the traffic is looking at individual parcels, but we're going to start looking at all of 38. I mean, we're designing, we're trying to get the state to design these roadways to handle the traffic that's going up and down there, but we keep jamming stuff into all these parcels. 19 townhouses on a 2.6 acre land, it just doesn't make sense to me. The one, the development that was up in front of us a couple of years ago was for a restaurant, some type of, you know, there's going to be like a Kentucky Fried Chicken or something like that that was going to go in there, and there's going to be a commercial aspect to it, and all the back was going to be wooded so it would block the residential part, so they wouldn't have to deal with the noise. This part right now, from what I can see, is they're going to clear most of this land. I mean, you can't really even see with this thing in the way, but you're talking about pretty much developing the whole parcel out here and putting in all these parking. I mean, 19, if you get 19 units, you're going to have at least 19 cars going in and out of there. And as Mr. Delaney spoke to, they don't go in at the same time every single day. So, I mean, someone's going to be coming home at 3 o'clock, somebody's going to be coming home at 3:45, somebody's going to be coming at 4, somebody's going to come at 4:15. It's going to go on for two hours, and there's going to be one car there that's going to want to take a left to go into that development. And every time there's a car sitting there with the blinker on, 38 is going to go back past Cumberland Farms. It's going to be, or whatever it is, that store that's there, but it's just going to back up, and it just doesn't make sense that we're not doing anything. There's no mitigation to go with these things. I mean, if they put in a decelerate lane and gave an easement for this property so that at least cars coming and going southbound could pull directly in and let the traffic keep flowing, if they were able to do something out there to put a churning lane in there to open up so you have it, I don't know what the width of the road is out there, but if there was a way to put something in there to put a churning lane so that at least you could pull into a queue to wait to turn left and let the traffic continue to flow through. But you got 40 apartment buildings going on right down the, right next to it that hasn't been built yet. You got another commercial development that's going on, like I said, and the one right across the street, we're going to be here three months from now, and they're going to want to build the same exact thing. If you keep allowing them to go build and jam every parcel, every parcel, put as much stuff as you can possibly put on there. The fact that they came in here with 20-something and now is lowering it to 19, it's like, oh, great, they're going to 19? Like 19 units on that, on 2.68 lot? It's insane. It's like there's way too many apartment buildings that are going in, and they keep building these also. We got a commercial building that we're going to build with no tenant. How many did we just approve that are vacant a year and a half later? And we just approved, I don't know, a couple more in the last couple of months that they're building more units out there, and nobody's going in? So, we're building something that hopefully somebody's going to move into. Who's going to have, who's going to want to take a space if the traffic can't get up and down that roadway? And right now, the way it's designed, there's no way you can get up and down the roadway. I mean, without these things even being built. I mean, I drive that road every single day. It takes me, when I take the left at Salem Street, it takes me probably about 15 minutes to get a block to take a right at Donner's Donuts to go uphill street. So, add 40 more units, 19 more units, five more units, and then this other place that's across the street, throw another 30 in that. It's like, it's, it just doesn't make sense to me. It's just, there's way too much traffic going up and down this roadway. They're not giving anything back to the town. There's no benefit to us. Like, what does the town get from this, other than more traffic and more things that are going in there? We get three, okay, we get three, you know, you know, affordable housing units out of 19? It's like, that's the big get that we're going to get out of the town? It just doesn't make sense to put that much stuff in there. I mean, if they were coming in there and they put in a restaurant or something like that on there, and they were doing some mitigation, doing something like that, like they proposed with the original development, you know, the people would be, understand that. But putting that many residential units and stopping traffic every single day, it's, might as well put a police guard out there, because you're not going to be able to go up and down. You're not going to get across the street without some mitigation.
I respond, Mr. Chairman. You know, again, in regards to density, I mean, this is, this is a less dense development for residential units than many of the past projects, recent projects that have been approved by this town. And we're talking seven and a half units an acre as opposed to 18 units an acre and 11, you know, at 2230 and 11 units an acre at 1455 Main. So, the density, you know, we, we started higher, it's further reduced, and we're still well below what has been approved. You know, in regards to the traffic, I mean, it is a low-impact development in the scheme of things. I mean, this is a commercially zoned site, and a commercial development could, if, if these guys went around, could easily come in here to some level by right and have, you know, a restaurant or something like that would generate, at peak times, when it's busiest, you'd have people coming in and out at much higher frequency than people sporadically coming home from work. So, and then in regards to the commercial piece, that, that's there because it's required to be there. I mean, it's, it's not something that, that is, you know, safe in saying not the most desirable piece of this development on behalf of the applicant, but it's something that is required per the bylaw to be as part of this development. So, let's just address some of the comments that were, that were made.
Well, I'll say this, because, actually, I want to clarify a question. Did the traffic study take into account the other approved developments?
That is a good question. I, I will ask, and I'll certainly.
Most of them have, but I don't know.
Yeah, I'll take a look at it, and I think based on the way the discussion is proceeded, it probably makes some sense to have Ron Mueller here at the next meeting as well.
I want to make sure that that's been included.
Yeah.
You know, when they say that the, the impact is minimal, I want to make sure the impact is minimal taking into account existing conditions, meaning the things that have been approved factored in.
Right.
One, one question I have before I make any other comment. How long has this site been vacant? Because I mean, it sounds like.
Yeah, I mean.
That, you know, people are chomping at the bit to put a retail establishment in, but I drive by there myself constantly since I live in that area, so I just want to make sure that we're, we're being fair to the point. How long has this site been empty?
Well.
Because, I mean, I've lived here a long time.
Right.
I'm pretty sure it's been empty almost the entire time I've lived here.
I think 2010 subway.
2010.
That was when it was going to be built.
So, we're back beyond that. How long before that does it have to be?
2002, I think.
Okay. So, you're not exactly chomping at the bit for the retail thing to go in there, correct? The restaurant?
Right. We have not marketed the.
But I'm going to ding you on the other side, because if I want to make a helpful comment, I'm going to hit you on the other side. So, when you say that the retail part is not the most, I mean, the commercial part is not the most desirable, it is because it lets you do what you want to do.
Well, that's true.
So, you wouldn't get anywhere near what you're looking for on that property without the, the commercial portion that's going in. So, when you say it's the least desirable, you're helping and hurting your own argument because you wouldn't get what you're asking for without that commercial component.
Right.
I'll help you on one side, I'm going to hit you on the other side.
I, I only mean it's there in the sense that that's part of the bylaw.
But we have these with them all, is that, you know, the commercial portion is meant to be important.
Sure.
It's not supposed to be a hindrance to your otherwise interests. So, with that, I'm sorry, so your turn.
My husband.
I'm sorry, I, I spoke, so I just want to make sure. Did anybody else have a comment? All right. Go ahead. I don't want to be rude.
I, just a couple comments for you guys to consider. My husband and I own.
Oh, I'm sorry. Name and address first, sorry.
Oh, sorry. My name's Jenny Mayer. I live at, I own 13 DeCarolus Drive with my husband, which is, right, you guys know. So, I guess I just, we bought the house in September of 2017. It was our first owning anything. Our daughter was born later that year. So, we have a one-year-old daughter, and our favorite part of the day is like letting the sun stream in through the back doors, and she likes to look at all the trees and all the squirrels. We have like a squirrel that comes and all the birds, and, you know, I know my neighbors enjoy that, too, and we don't have much, you know, land, because obviously property's expensive, we couldn't afford a house, but, you know, that was one of the big selling points of the condo was that little land, and it's a really nice forest. I mean, even now, even in winter, there's so much to look at, and it's nice to have that kind of privacy. So, that was a really big selling point for us. And I guess I just wanted to know, I guess if I can ask a question or if you guys could tell us, I mean, a 35-foot building is going to cut our sunlight, first of all, I'm guessing a little bit, but also, like, are you guys going to leave some trees for us? Are you going to, is there going to be a fence? Is there, like, what's going to be there? Because I'd hate to just look out and there be no nature at all.
If I may. So, the, the intent is always to save as many trees as possible. Regarding specific trees at this, where I sit here today, I couldn't point to them, but we've also, as I mentioned in the beginning, there's an open dialogue between the applicants, myself, and, and members of your, your board or committee or whatever you call it over at the condominiums there, to try and come up with a, a way to help address the concern that you're talking about. So, that will be an ongoing discussion. It will be reflected on plans as the resolution is, is developed.
Okay.
And we'll continue to work.
I guess it just asks that everyone take that into consideration, you know, if something's going to go up in our backyard, kind of, that you guys try to keep as much nature or trees there sidelined for us as possible, so it's not like we're staring directly into someone's bathroom. So, thank you.
Hi, good evening. Good evening. My name is Christine Kilburn. I'm on the board of the Tewksbury Townhouses, which are a butter's. I've met the owners at the conservation meeting last week. We do, we would like to work with them. We do have several concerns, though. Several of our residents are here tonight, specifically, as you heard, some that are going to be right, affect, rightly affected by this. For these units, that are units, we have a 51-foot area to our property line for one of the buildings and 53 feet to the other building, and then in speaking at the conservation meeting, they were planning a 50-foot buffer zone, leaving 100 feet between buildings, as I understood it, and I think you confirmed that. So, that leaves 100 feet, and then speaking with you after the meeting, as you said, you plan to take down as little trees as possible. Since that meeting, looking at the property line, there appears to just be one row of trees, you know, that are there between the, your site and our site. That's just one thing that we're concerned about. The other thing, some other stuff that came up tonight is the height of the building that you're planning to build. It seems like that it sounds, and listening tonight, it might be like Indian Ridge or some of the other ones where you're planning the garage underneath. Like Jen said, the height of the building, especially if it's going to be as close as 100 feet to those existing units at Tewksbury Townhouse, that would definitely be a concern because that's not that far away from one another. In talking with the other board members since the last meeting I attended, we do have some concerns about the SOAR. We put the SOAR in at Tewksbury Townhouses about 19 years ago. The townhouses put that in. The townhouses put that in. It was taken over by the town of Tewksbury and is maintained by a pump house at the back end of our property. At the time, it was built, that, that pump house was built to handle all of South Tewksbury, including the Trehan School, and although the school at that time ended up being run off of a different pump station. But we do have some concerns of the size of the sewer lines running down our street, and if, when, if they tie into it, if it's gonna use that sewer line running down our street. And can that, can that sustain nineteen units being maintained down to that pump house? Because I'm, all of us aren't, you know, capable engineers or whatnot, but we do have a really big concern about that. I did find out some of that information today regarding the pump station and whatnot. Another concern that we have is snow removal, especially where you said today where you're projecting that you'll put the snow removal and the water runoff because of snow removal and storms. The area where you're building your townhomes is at a higher level than the back of our complex, and in the spring, no matter, at any time of the year when we have a lot of snow or not, all the water, when the snow melts and when there's a lot of rain or whatnot, runs down towards the river and the wetlands, and it can, when it melts or whatnot, it will flow towards our units, and it can come all the way up to almost the end of our tree line. So, that is a valid concern for us, where we might see that additional intake of snow and, and whatnot, and how your drainage might be as well. So, these are all things that have come to light in the last few days, and, and also the entrance, your entrance areas, and the parking. We have visitor parking. I know you said, you know, you planned five guest spaces, I think. For nineteen units, I've been on the board for, I don't know, fifteen or so years. I know that five guest spaces for nineteen units, we have a much bigger complex, that doesn't seem adequate, adequate to me at all. I know that when there's, you know, part, different parties or holidays, Christmas, Easter, graduation time, things like that, you may get more than one or two visitors to a one unit or two units with more than one or two cars that would use up those spaces. And in our units, when there's a snowstorm, those guest lots are completely full, because everyone parks their car in the lot so that their driveway can get plowed. So, those are just some of our concerns, and I would ask that you consider them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments?
Uh, I guess just in regards to the sewer, the, the town engineer has, has reviewed this, issued a letter, and didn't, didn't raise any concerns. You know, the, the pipe is, is eight inches in diameter, which, which in theory is sufficient capacity to carry the sewer developed by the site, and he didn't mention any issues with the pump station up ahead. And then, just regards to how, how the site grades, is we, we've intentionally graded this site to try and carry water around this building, trying to keep everything in this wetland that's on site, and, and taking the strides to have water carry around, whether it's snow or stormwater, to, to keep it off of the neighboring properties. So, the intent is to get, keep everything on site and push it towards the wetland that's on site. So, those are my two, two bullets there. And then, then we'll continue to work with the condos. I mean, that's, we've, we've tried to make that, we're pushing for that.
Anyone else have any other questions, comments, or concerns? All right, I'll bring it back to the board. Mr. Fowler.
A possible answer, from my viewpoint, the young lady's question about the water coming out of the snow storage into their area. If you move the commercial forward, as we talked about, conforming with the bylaw, and putting, and put the parking in the back of that, you actually pull up a lot of area that is behind it, to the right of it, where you could have a cut in the curb, so you could use that side, that is, what towards the wetlands, for your snow, snow storage. To me, it makes more sense now that you moved, yeah, you moved the building, and if you flip the parking to the back, especially at night, where you're not gonna have a lot of people using that parking sp, those parking spaces at the commercial, you could drive right out and, with a Bobcat, and carry the snow in the back and let it melt. That's all.
So, again, something for consideration, anyways. Any other questions or comments at this time? No one else in the audience right now? All right. With that, that is the pleasure of the board at this time.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh.
Continue, continue the public hearing. Continue the public hearing, so.
Who's the next? The twenty-eighth at seven oh five. Does that work? All right, so I have a motion to continue this to seven oh five on the twenty-eighth. I have a second, I have a second, so all those who favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Just one comment, if I'm not mistaken, someone's missing on the twenty-eighth, correct? All right. So, for your purposes, just so you understand, I would suggest, since there's an awful lot here, that you still come back on the twenty-third with whatever information you have, twenty-eighth, sorry, twenty-eighth. I'll leave it up to you at that point, where we stand, whether or not you do or don't wanna vote, but at that point, with one member missing, that means you gotta get four out of four of the people who are present at that time. So, I'll leave it up to you, I always do, to the petitioner, whether or not they wanna continue to another meeting when all the members might be present. But, I'm just letting you know that now.
Okay.
That's what you're probably gonna find when you come in on the twenty-eighth. Okay?
Great.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes, I may. I would think, talk to Mrs. McGinnis and find out what she has come up with as far as questions from us that have to be answered. Questions from the town engineer, building inspector, and that way, you're not gonna miss anything. But, two of you get together, you make it work.
Makes sense, yes, thank you.
All right, so, yeah. Oh, sorry. With that one continued, the agenda item D, which is one thirty-eight Astle Street, open space residential design special requirement, subdivision, continued.
Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants.
Christian Mayer, one thirty-eight Astle. Good evening.
All right, thank you. So, we submitted this about a month ago, give or take. We got a letter late last week, and I contemplated on continuing it, but I knew I was coming anyway, so, because I know you've seen this a handful of times now, you're very familiar with it. What I was thinking is maybe kinda give you just a general overview of what we submitted, and then, there's a couple of pieces in the engineering review letter, specifically the waivers, that I think might be helpful for, from our standpoint, to walk through to, to see where we stand on that stuff. So, I'm just gonna approach the, so, you recall, when we were here in September, we had a, a six-lot residential open space subdivision with approximately six hundred feet of roadway. Obviously, we went back and forth a handful of times specifically about the affordable component, which we couldn't really get to, to the same spot. About forty-five days ago or so, Christian and I sat down with Anna, Mr. Sadwick, and members of the DPW, and basically reviewed a plan that was very similar to this, and I think we basically had an agreement that, okay, I think this is the better of the, of the layouts that we, that we've seen so far. Took that information, and then I think we actually came to you guys, before we did some final design stuff, just tried to get on the same page. So, to get a sense for what those changes were, again, six hundred feet, sixty lots to approximately three hundred and seventy feet lots, gonna keep the existing residents, we get one, two, three generally oversized lots, and we've got open space that conforms to the minimum open space requirements for the town, as well as a fifth unbuiltable lot that is gonna, Christian and his partners will retain as a separate piece away from the subdivision. So, the changes allowed us to reduce the amount of disturbed area by about twenty percent. We go from a little over three acres to just about two and a half acres or so. We're able to reduce a little bit more than a half an acre total disturbed area, and then we reduce the, the pervious surface by approximately twenty-five percent as well. Kinda wanna walk through the grading, because we had, had a lot of discussions about grading, a little bit about drainage as well, but essentially, the, the idea here is that we can kinda align the proposed roadway or driveway with Kittredge Avenue so that our center lines match up. We're gonna have a small cut-in, somewhere about fifty to seventy-five feet in to surface the existing residents. We actually have an existing porch along the side of the existing house that's gonna have to be either modified or razed in order to meet the setback requirement for the new roadway. Roadway is, I believe, is twenty feet in width and approximately three hundred and seventy-six, sixty-seven feet in length. Basically have one curve here coming into a second, in, in lieu of the typical cul-de-sac, we have the, the T-type turnaround. So, one of the challenges with this, obviously, and I know you guys have all seen it, I've presented to you a handful of times now, just the topography, and how we try to deal with the topography, and how we try to deal with the drainage related to the topography. DPW's been steadfast in not taking any water off of a development into the right way. It used to be that we would not increase it, but they don't want any water, so that, that's how we have to design this. So, essentially, we have two catch bases along the roadway that actually buck the slope and go all the way up back to a pont here, tie back into a wetland regime, and eventually cross Astle Street there. So, we're able to get all the, the elevations to work and get minimum slopes. To do this, we have to actually design the pipe for a hundred-year storms. So, normally, we'd either do a ten-year or twenty-five-year storm to the diameter of the slope, to make sure that those pipes can pass, but in this application, because we're feeding into a stormwater pond, we actually designed to pass a hundred-year design stroke. It's kind of very high-level, I know you guys have seen this a handful of times. You have questions about that, you can try to answer that. If not, I can kinda walk through the, the request for waiver that we put together. That's really, I walked through DPW's letter, and, you know, very thorough, but very doable. I did think it made sense to talk about the waivers, talk about what we're requesting, just to make sure that we're all on the same page before we go through and finalize everything and move forward. Okay? All right. So, this is now a private roadway, it's not a public roadway. That's one of the concessions that, I guess, we make or you make, I'm not sure who makes the bigger concession, but in, in essence, the construction standards of the roadway and the cross-sections will, will be maintained, as far as depth of gravels and pavement, however, it'll be private and privately maintained. So- So, waiver number one is specific to, to this radius point right here. The, the subdivision regs require a twenty-five-foot radius. The only problem with the twenty-five-foot radius is that it eats up a lot of this area and creates a very wide mouth essentially to the roadway, hitting Astle Street. It's only something we could change if anyone felt strongly about it, but twenty feet basically keeps a consistent thirty-foot right way, pretty close all the way up to Astle Street. And that's something we've asked for in the past, and generally, we've been able to, to As far as the geometric changes that we're proposing, so we're asking for, waiver number two would be a minimum centerline radius reduction from a hundred and fifty feet to fifty feet. And so, you recall, we kinda bent over backwards to try to be able to keep the residents and develop the back portion. So, through the use of a private road, we're, we're asking for consideration to allow for, for this curve here and this curve here to be less than the required one hundred and fifty, and they're actually fifty-foot radius. Now, if it was a public roadway, we're servicing ten or twelve blocks, we wouldn't ask for this, but since it's essentially a driveway serving four lots, we feel like it's a reasonable request. Waiver number three has to do with section eight point one point zero, and these are the geometric design regulations. So, typically, you have twenty-four feet of pavement, we have twenty feet of pavement. You guys actually have a minimum distance or separation between reverse curves, so when you turn this way and you turn that way, you need a minimum separation. Typically, the, the bylaw requires one hundred feet, we have seventy-six feet here. have 76 feet here. Some of the vertical geometry with the sad curves here, which is basically the rate of change of the curve, we're looking to, consideration to allow for the... A-value go from 30 down to 10. One of the things you might recall from the last time we were here, we talked a little bit about how the roadway will approach the, will approach Astle Street. It's one of the big challenges we had, being tied to Astle Street. The original plan was a preliminary review. We actually came in at about 8 percent down of that pavement. We got some feedback from you, we got some feedback from DPW. We're not providing a 20-foot leveling pad before we go up to 2 percent. And then going into the curve tangent at 6 percent. So we softened that up a bit. Typically, you guys are within 50 feet of an intersection to be no more than 2 percent. We actually have 6 percent starting approximately, I don't know, maybe 48 feet, plus or minus. Waiver four is to eliminate the cul-de-sac and allow for a T-type turnaround, and then waiver five is essentially to the cross-section. Turbing sidewalks, grass grips, streetlights, and street trees. Street trees were actually shown here. I'm not sure the density and number and separation comply completely. The streetlights, I think Anna in her letter indicated that she'd like to see the lights along, at the driveway entrances, which I think makes sense. Now, the final one is relative to the stormwater management and erosion control bylaw. Obviously, this is under definitive review. We get a review from DPW, goes to conservation, they review the wetland line, as well as DEP. So, when we design a roadway of this magnitude, you have your typical subdivision regulations that specify design minimums. We feel more appropriate regulation would be ash-toe small, this is a very low-volume local road, so average daily trips under 400 trips per day. Where we have no more than four lots, they're all residential lots, that'll be used by people who primarily know the roadway, these minimums are in compliance, what we're asking for is in compliance with these standards. We can provide this to you. I made some coffees, if you'd like. So I guess to kind of recap it, what we tried to do, sit down with the town through a meeting, and Anna and Steve and DPW were good enough to have with us, get on the same page, come back to you guys, show you what we have. We're looking at, we basically designed around that stuff. The waivers are the waivers. The waivers are stuff that we've done for very similar applications previously. I think they're appropriate for this four-lot residential design, and they comply with the national standard, which isn't the typical ash-toe, which is for bigger roadways. But something of this magnitude, feel it's appropriate. Anything else?
No.
Well, being in this...
Stop. Want me to start elsewhere?
No. We're not building three and keeping existing. So that sets back that we don't have an affordable, that's how they avoid the...
Correct.
Kind of like the other plan better, but I don't see anything. I'm fine with what it is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you mentioned it being a full lot, but actually, it's only three, because the existing is going to be the existing, correct?
Correct. Yep.
So three house lots will be using the road you are describing to us for the most part?
For the most part. Yep.
You know, that being said, what is Mr. Hardeman's take on what you just proposed to us?
So, obviously, that's why I wanted to talk about it. He does not support waivers one, two, and three that I presented to you tonight. That's in his letter.
He being the engineer that we rely on a lot, I've got to think of what he says as pretty substantial, in my view.
Absolutely, and so, again, we were, my intention when I got the letter was to continue, but I thought there was enough merit here to say, hey, let's just have a discussion about this and...
With that being said, I'd like to see some of more of his comments and see if we can resolve this somehow with him, if that's even possible. I don't know if it is or not, so. The other issue I want to discuss are the sidewalks. I know you want to eliminate the sidewalks, but I think one side of the development sidewalks is definitely a necessity, and maybe some fee in lieu of for the other side, but just my own opinion. Watch that for now, Mr. Chairman.
I don't agree with, as much as I'd like the sidewalks, it's not a town road. Does it require a sidewalk? I thought it did.
Under the rules...
Technically, it rolls around, so it's really going to depend on what we decide.
I'm thinking more of the residents, Mr. Fowler, than being a town road, that they have to travel, not that they want to go walking, and they want a street rather than sidewalk, but that's just my opinion, so.
And I'll go with majority, but I don't think it should be required for that reason alone. Not like it's a through street, not like there are 20 houses or 10 houses, 10 houses on, there are three. You're all neighbors, most of them coming out of one driveway.
Anything else?
That's it?
Mr. Redd.
Thank you. After reading Mr. Hardeman's notes, being on that side of the table on a daily basis, I know it's a difficult decision and a difficult position, giving the planning board your requirements, so I tend to support the DPW and their requests. It's, it doesn't, you know, I know we can override, but I tend to go along with, you know, Mr. Hardeman when possible. As far as the sidewalk, you know, I look at it, I see Mr. Fattalia's point, you know, if I'm purchasing a house, you know, a new home of a decent value, a nice, you know, looks going to be a nice development, you're probably going to get families, you know, it's nice to have a little sidewalk that you can walk your child, dog, or even if it's an elderly person that's able to walk up on that sidewalk. So I think on one side would be something that I would like to see. But as far as, you know, waiver number four, the T, I don't see an issue with that. You know, that's standard, we've done that in the past. And then I don't see the, you know, the stormwater relief. I think that's, you know, obviously with conservation, once that goes through that. The big concern was what the abutting neighbors over on Sesame Street, which I think with this layout that mitigates that, keeps the water away from that property. But as far as 1, 2, and 3, I'll have to go along with Mr. Hardeman. Thank you.
So my only thing with the 1, 2, and 3, I mean, I see the comment in here, I mean, I know that there are requirements in general, but I mean, when you make comments like, you know, the motoring public, I'm not sure exactly who the motoring public is on what amounts to a driveway. So, I mean, we've gone round and round with this for an awfully long time, and what we wanted generally was for them to keep the house in the front. In order to keep the house in the front, it requires some, a little bit of gymnastics here in working the road, and otherwise, you're forcing them to get rid of the house, move it to the other side to build a fourth lot. You know, we've gone around and around, and we're building four, three, two, one, seven, whatever. But I think when we've given them sort of the marching orders, that we wanted them to keep the house and do the three lots in the back, to at this point now say, and again, I don't see in here, other than the other requirements is what's being said here, not so much the detriment that would be caused if we gave these waivers. In some case, they're very small deviations to the waivers that we're asking, but one is like, it's 50 and they're at 48. So if any of these are major problems, I guess in the meantime, between now and the next meeting, I'd like to hear why they're major problems.
Yeah, if they can come, you get close, I guess after, I know you met with Mr. Hardeman and, you know, the planning, are you able to get to his requirements? I mean, is there possibilities without a significant impact on that driveway?
No. No, I, so to be frank, I don't think so. Some of the things like the distance between, maybe some of them, we could, okay, but distance between reverse curves, I don't have the room on the site if we want to keep that house.
So that's sort of my point, is that, you know, we've gone along with this, and we've sort of given guidance and expectations that, you know, you're going to build the three lots, keep the other house. I think some allowances on our part, more expectations of allowances on our part, you know, where they can be given, would be expected, and I could understand that. So, again, unless one of these three is of a major concern or safety issue beyond just that why they were created, I mean, again, what we're ultimately talking about here is a driveway. I mean, that's ultimately what this is. It's an enormously long, convoluted driveway, you know, so if we mean the requirements that we can get those emergency vehicles in and out of there, if these curves aren't going to cause them major malfunctions, those kind of things, that I'm more apt to, you know, lean to the side of granting these, because again, they're internal. You know, we're not doing this on Astle Road. We're doing this on a driveway, basically, that comes off of Astle Road. It's going to affect ultimately three people, truthfully, because the first person's so close to the front, it makes no difference really to the original house. It really only affects the other three. So that's my thoughts on the waivers. I'm not, the rest of the waivers, I have no problem, but those three, between now and then, see how close to together you guys can get, but I'm more apt to, you know, to grant waivers in this because of what we've asked for over the course of these hearings, and because I don't see where they're really going to affect the motoring public. They're going to affect the motorists that drive up to their houses. So that's my thought on those. As far as the sidewalk, when Mr. Fattalia first said it, I thought, it's a driveway, why do I care? And then Mr. Fowler kind of said it, but in the meantime, while I've said, I will say, this is an awfully long way to go from the houses till they get to the street if they do want to go for a walk. So they are going to be walking down the driveway, you know, that we're talking about. So if there's some way to put something in to give people access to get out to the road, because I mean, it is possible somebody may want to take a walk. My guess is they may be winded by the time they get to Astle Road, may want to just turn around and come back, but I'm not going to say I'm going to make you put in a sidewalk at this point. I'm not saying that. Just, I'm considering the fact that it is possible that something on one side, I'm not asking for payments in lieu of or anything like that, because while it is a requirement, you're asking for the waiver, it's not really a street from our perspective like this. It is in technicality. It's just, it is a long way to go. So I don't know, you know, it also means that that's an awfully long sidewalk. That's the other thing. It's basically for three people, possibly. So, I don't know, just think about it. If you come back and say it doesn't make sense for XYZ, I'm not going to jump all over you for it, but I don't want to dismiss it out of hand either that Mr. Fattalia brought it up.
The only reason I even consider pushing back, because I think you guys are being pretty reasonable here, is that it's a sidewalk to nowhere, right? Because you get to Askle, there's more traffic and not a sidewalk, so try to balance that.
And that would be a valid answer to me in saying it. I'm just thinking, I just think of it as a, it is a long route for them internally, although at the same time, it's basically three people whose cars you may have to dodge while you're walking down the driveway. So I'm not that worried about it.
To Mr. Redd's point, like about people coming in and out, you're, it's, you're going to be in more trouble if you go walk that sidewalk out in Astle than you would be staying in that development.
So, like I said, I'm not going to jump all over you. You know, Mr. Fattalia brought it up. I don't, I want it dismissed out of hand. Think about it. Your answer right now may be sufficient to me anyways, but that was all. But like, I certainly wasn't going to ask for any kind of fees in lieu of or anything like that, so. Mr. Fowler?
If perchance, and we've done this in other sites, on walkways, driveways, whatever you want to call them, semi-streets, that didn't have sidewalks, and if it was, our concern was for the children that would be waiting at the end of the street for school bus, so they couldn't wait, especially in the snow times, they couldn't wait on the sidewalk because it isn't there, if someone's going to shovel it. I'll say that. Did I say that? You say this. But what we've had done, and I can show you, I think, one of the first ones we did, other than a condominium site, was Ginsburg Drive. Just put a site, asphalt site, on where the sidewalk would be, filled with it, someplace for someone to stand off the curb.
Actually, and again, it's more of a decorative thing, but it's kind of a place where, you know, you might find a bench kind of thing. You know, if nothing else, it becomes decorative, but it does give you a place down at the end there, you know, if you're waiting for someone, or if you're waiting for the school bus or something like that, you know, I don't think it'll be...
So the person that's winded going down.
Exactly, when they finally get down to their mailbox or whatever.
You're going to have a chance.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
In the meantime, I'll speak with Mr. Hardeman as well. I'll get out to him, explain that you're going to look towards, you know, the ability, what we can do there, and, you know, get an understanding of his concern, and so have that for the next meeting. I'll speak.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to weigh in on that issue. I, you know, listening to your comments about the waivers and so forth, I'd be willing to bend a little bit as well, you know, on those, as far as Mr. Hardeman's request. And I know the rules are the rules, the regulations are the regulations, but in an effort to try to work together with all parties here, I'd be willing to also consider that, so.
Actually, as I see Mr. Fattalia sort of handling that pamphlet that you gave us, is that something you've already discussed with Mr. Hardeman?
No, I mean, we got...
I think that would be...
That's what I wanted to discuss, is what you're saying. This is going to be sufficient that will offset some of his concerns about climate management. That may be, after reading this, he's okay with. I just, I know it's a difficult position. I sit there every day, so I see, I...
And I understand Mr. Hardeman's position too, is that he's going to ask for the absence.
It's a balancing act.
Yeah, I understand.
Ultimately, it is going to come back to us to make a decision, but I'd rather know, you know, if he has a very specific concern on one of these, you're on just, it's the rule. I'd like to know why, and then why you can't meet it, or where, how close can you get, from my perspective, like I said. You know, we have Askle Lot, gone round and round with this. I don't want to be, you know, I hate absolutes with some of these things when we can avoid them. So with that, this is a public hearing, so I'll put it out to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns, would you just slide your easel over, because she's going to come up to the podium?
Hi, I'm...
Did you want one of those pages back?
Pardon me?
Did you want one of those pages back that you were going to point out?
I hadn't seen, but, no, this one will be fine.
Okay. Could you state your name and your address, please, for the record?
I'm Karen Rogers. I live at 158 Astle Street. We've been there for almost 50 years, so I know the area quite well. And this proposed driveway, I was concerned about water problems that we have in that area. This is a hill flowing right down toward my house, right here. So the driveway's going to come down across Philly level here, but down a hill right toward my house, my driveway, my garage, down the hill, and then across... And then across, cut across, cut across the hill, and then looks like back up and then down to the driveways to the homes. I just am very concerned about the water. We have been pumping water since probably August, when we started getting that heavy rain. My cellar floods, so we have to really be concerned about having a pump pumping all the time. This water, the water is going to flow down a hill now across the driveway pavement. In the winter, Astor Street right here has an icing problem. There's a sign up to warn about it, but digging into this hillside now, I don't know how much disturb it's going to cause, you know. So you're really going to be digging right to make the driveway off-road. So that was my concern.
Yeah. Do you mind if I broke stuff?
So, all that makes sense. So this is a plan that shows how the land actually sits now. So I think this is you, Rogers, here?
Yes.
So you get water that basically comes off of this hill like this, and there must be a wetland that kind of comes across.
Yes. Right now, the swamp is filled with water because of all the rain. It's quite a wet area there right now.
So one thing we're doing, so you can kind of get a sense of this, is that basically the elevation of the property line that we share is going to be the same. And our roadway is going to start somewhere about 10 to 15 feet off of that property line. And what we're actually going to have is a curve along here. Be it a tuminous berm, like a tuminous curve, like a pavement type curve. And so as water comes down, it's going to get caught in the road, which will then be carried off to the pond.
Hope.
Well, yeah, absolutely. But in reality, the amount of water you get off our site will be less than it is now.
But digging into the earth now, you could be disturbing a spring that's there that causes that icing, that spring that runs out into Astor Street for icing. You just don't know what, how much disturbing of the earth here is going to be. There's a small, it's a small wooded area, so you're going to be taking that all the way. You're going to be digging up the dirt earth, and it's going to take a while to become established again. So, you know, for two years or so, we'll be having more and more water running off that earth until it's reestablished. Now you're looking at maybe a sidewalk, a sidewalk. What side of the road would the sidewalk be on? How much more closer to my property line would that be? And then the other concern was how you're coming in off of Astor Street at the top of the hill there. People coming up the hill, it's kind of on a curve. So it's could be like a blind spot almost for someone pulling out of that driveway. The cars, if I got Speedway to Lowell now, Astor Street, from Main Street over to get to Whipple Road and into Lowell. So people have been using that street now for a cut across, and it's been quite, can be quite dangerous just trying to pull out of your driveway. Where is the utilities going to be, water and sewage? Is that going to come in from Sesame Street?
Oh, no, no. It'll all come in through the roadway.
Okay. So you're not having any access up from Sesame Street at all? Okay. So we got digging for driveway, digging for sewage and water? I'm just concerned about our water problem.
Thank you.
And then, well, this whole back lot has been forest and stuff, so now we got the three new homes in the back there. Are you planning on the landscaping? Is that going to be part of your, part of the project of building the homes? Or you wait for a homeowner to come in and decide how they're going to landscape?
So what we're proposing is street trees along the roadway. Yeah, so in between your lot and this lot. Well, I mean, they draw on the land. But really, the idea was we wanted the truck to be slumber in between the roadway and your lot. Those are the only things that went into the layout here to try to... Because we don't want to necessarily maintain a housing as they drive in, so they want to maintain that country wooded kind of feel.
Was there any consideration of having the driveway just go straight back, straight back from the house that's existing there? I just think like that would...
Yes. Yes, there was.
Create less of a problem, but...
Yep. So we looked at this a number of ways. Could not get the roadway, even on the private roadway, through the area that was there.
Yeah, yeah, this... Okay, well, good luck with your project. Just be considerate of our water problem. It's just a...
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Jim, on the bottom of, I should say, the abutting property, Mrs. Rogers' house, elevation looks roughly 174, 176 at the toe of that hill.
Yeah.
Roughly, elevation of retention pond, 162, give or take? Can potential pitching as much as a culvert, grassy culvert, to mitigate that towards that back parcel along the toe of that hill? To take any water from her property to direct it up towards the back, towards the retention pond? I don't have a scale with me, just a distance.
You're saying from the bottom here, along the toe of the hill that abuts her property
to bring it to, back towards that wetland and ultimately into the pond?
So like this area here?
Yeah, that and the toe of the hill along her property, coming off of the edge of roadway, backside of grass.
We can look at it. I'm not sure there's enough room, and then we end up cutting more trees to try to catch it.
If you can retain it on the property and get it to pitch somewhat, pitch away from down towards the back parcel?
So we got a lot of comments about drainage. I was disappointed that the abutter isn't here because I went through and marked everything up here to kind of show how this thing is actually working.
Actually, I was a little concerned.
Oh, don't, don't call.
We got one more meeting, so...
If you can try, I mean, there's a slight, she's got, you know, it seems that it does pitch towards her property, but potentially at the toe of the hill, bring it down at least away from the backside of her property to the backyard to get it to go. I'm not sure, I mean...
I'm not sure either, but I'll definitely look at it.
Yep. Thank you.
All right. So with no other comments from the public, everybody on the board is all set right now, right? All right. So with that, what is the pleasure of the board?
Continue.
All right. Motion to continue to 710 on the 28th. I have a motion made. Do I have a second? Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries. You guys have the 28th.
All right.
Thank you.
Just to give you guys the same heads up.
There's four.
There will be four of us on the 28th.
Right.
Mr. Ried will not be present. So you guys, you know, if you have information, I suggest it's bringing in unless it's on. All that's left is approval. Then it's up to you guys. You either want to come before the floor that are here and have us make a decision, or you can wait for the next full board meeting. That's up to you guys. But I'll let you know now. And then, you know, you guys decide with the 28th how you want to proceed. You may want to come in and give information. You may want to wait. I don't know. It's completely up to you, but I'll give you the heads up now.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Takes care of the hearings. Moving on to old business. Do we have any old business to discuss? Mr. Fowler, do you have some old business?
Well, I just want to thank our planner for the letters that she has given to us on all of these projects. Brings us up to speed. Having said that, you have some information for us, Mr. Chairman?
I do?
Yes. You met with someone on, it says, yes.
Are you referring to 937 North Street?
The street, the apartment, the hotel.
Yep. That would be 937 North Street.
Oh, okay. I didn't, I didn't meet with anyone.
So, my update, Kevin Feely is going to be contacting you via phone call.
Oh, okay.
Give you a update on the traffic to have a discussion on that. So due to the holiday schedule, I'm sure that's...
Okay, yeah. So we haven't had that conversation yet. I guess I'm going to have that conversation. Okay. Did he give any indications? Was that just, is he giving me an update, or is there something more substantial?
You had a question on the traffic, so it's going to be a discussion on that.
Okay. Was there a... Did they have their hearing already? I thought that...
No, that's going to be in February.
Oh, okay. Okay. So wait, so that means they got past the mini trial.
Yeah, so the February is going to be the main trial to determine if they need to do a full trial or not.
All right. So I thought that was supposed to have already happened. Yeah, I did too, but okay, that's fine. They may have postponed it again for whatever reason. Okay, that's fine. All right. So let me just, any new business? No new business. Now we got correspondence, which is what we have here. So we just went through one of those. Did you want to run through or...
I just, you know, I don't think I need to go through it. It describes it, but there is just one, one of them I want to talk about is the Heatherwood one. I went and visited the site, and they were missing the 15 grasses plants. So I reached out to the contact, and he responded. He had a landscaper call me and discuss, you know, options. And, you know, I said to bring it to the planning board. So like direction, you know, the landscaper is happy to plant it now, and if it doesn't survive in the wintertime, to replant in the spring. But I suggested that it would make the most sense to do in the springtime. So I just liked the direction on that to follow up with them.
Yeah, I think the spring makes...
Are you speaking for direction for us, one plant?
I think because they were, wanted to fulfill their obligation, so, yeah.
I would like them to fulfill their obligations too. There's some time. Why do you want to have a time?
Plant, yeah. Put the plantings in, March or April, but no later.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, great. I'll follow up.
April 30th deadline?
Yeah, just, yeah.
May 1 deadline?
Yeah, a May 1 deadline.
There you go.
My favorite words. Make a motion for adjournment.
All right. So that's it for correspondence. No other comments. That'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
A motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye. All is opposed, motion carries. Good evening.